I'd like to call the order to order, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, December the ninth. The first thing on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. And we have Darrell Robertson down is doing the invocation. Larry Yoder is going to do the invocation, and I will do the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody will please stand.
Let us pray. My kind and gracious most heavenly Father, the opportunity you have given us together, be with us as we conduct the business of the county. We'd ask that you'd be with our leaders across the nation, across each state, and across our local governments, be it our military personnel, both at home and abroad, especially during this holiday season, as they are out protecting us, be it our law enforcement, our emergency personnel. Be with them and hope that this holiday season that is coming about will be one of peace and joy for each and every one. We'd ask your blessings upon each person this holiday season, and remember the reason for Christmas and what it is all about. If we ask these things in thy name, amen.
Amen. Attention, pledge, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda, and I hope everyone at home can hear me and everyone in the audience can hear me, is the Commissioners' report. Does any Commissioner have anything they would like to present? Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to talk about?
No, thank you.
Judy?
No, I would just like to say that I thank the Lord that our parade came off without the bad weather that they were promising us.
And Mr. Yoder, you have anything you'd like to talk about?
Not at this time.
I would like to, Judy mentioned the parade, I would like to also mention the parade. We did dodge the weather, even though it was sort of kind of cool. I'm glad I didn't have to ride on one of the floats. I was in, Larry drove, and Darrell and I were fortunate enough to be able to ride with him. But I wanted to commend the folks that volunteered to coordinate the parade. Some of you know, some of you may not know, that the county produces the parade, and it's still wonderful to have the parade in Taylorsville. I have to tell a quick story, a personal story, then I'll mention what I was going to say. We were talking today, I was talking to Rick, and we were just talking about some various things, and how long the parade's been going on, which we're not really sure. But I do remember one parade in particular. I was six years old, and my father's law office was upstairs. Everybody knows where the flower shop is on the corner, next to Republican Headquarters. And so my brother and I, Michael, who just passed away, anyhow, we went across the street to the dime store and got pea shooters. So we thought that it'd be fun to shoot the pea shooters at the people riding horses in the parade, just to see if the horses would buck up. I don't remember if we got a shot off or not with a pea shooter, but I do remember my father catching us, and of course, I caught it when I got home for doing that kind of thing. But seriously, what I do want to do is congratulate and thank the volunteers, and truly volunteers, our county manager, Rick French, Lenny Rogers, Jamie Miller, Dwayne Cooley, Julie Campbell, Allison Brown, Ashley Clack, Leslie Mettis, Chad Ritchie, Richie, excuse me. Chad, edit that out if you don't mind. And the Sheriff, Alexander County Sheriff's Department, they provided a lot of support for traffic control, and also the Taylorsville Police Department. So without all these folks, we would not have had the parade. Just would offer one more thing, and I told Larry this, we were riding together. One thing that really tickled me, and always does, are the small children, just to see their faces when you go by and throw the candy out, and they're just so excited. Of course, I don't remember those days as far as, because it's too long ago, in the dark ages of when I was that age, but just seriously, it's so much fun to see that. So no other comments from Commissioners? The next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I approve.
Second?
All in favor, raise your right hand. The agenda is approved. The first item on the agenda is public comment, and we have Mr. Glenn Mays, who is with the Friends of the Library, going to talk about Read to Me program. So Glenn, if you'd come to the podium, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me just a moment, I have a few props I need to get out. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. French, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of the Alexander Friends of the Library. Let me allay any fears, though, up front, that you might have. I'm not here to ask for money. I am here, though, to seek your support, as well as that of everyone in Alexander County, about a program that I'm going to share some information with you about. I'm going to share information about a program which the Friends of the Library undertook last spring. It's called Read to Me. The program is a partnership of the Alexander County Library, the Alexander Friends of the Library, the Partnership for Children, and several of the more than 50 daycare centers in Alexander County. The Friends of the Library purchases books at the three-year-old level, and I have a couple of them, and I'll show you. We purchase these, and those are given, actually, they're read first, read to the three-year-olds in the daycare centers, in several of the daycare centers. Right now, it's 12 that we're providing readership for. And once the volunteer has read this, read the book, the book is given to the daycare center so that it can be reread to the students later, and even several times if they want it reread. And you may ask why we targeted three-year-olds for this project. Well, research has shown that 85 to 90 percent of the brain's development occurs in the first 2,000 days from birth until a child is ready to enter kindergarten. Children who are consistently read to and who are surrounded by quality children's books are more likely to develop stronger language and reading abilities, and they enter school prepared to succeed and develop a lifelong love of reading. Providing young children with literacy skills offers a path to improved achievement. Now, this greater level of achievement leads to all sorts of good things. One is lower crime rates. It's a greater opportunity for better jobs. It's a better economy for the community. And in general, it's a higher standard of living for everyone. I said earlier that I'm not here to ask for money, but for support. Now, this is a program that has such, so much potential that everyone, everyone, US County Commissioners and every citizen of this county should really dedicate themselves to it. Parents, read to your children. All the citizens can volunteer to read, and we're looking for volunteers. We hope to continue to expand this program until all of the daycare centers, each one of them has a volunteer reading to the three-year-olds once a month. The program is really just in its infancy. Its broad effects likely won't be seen or felt for a few years, but they will be felt as the program succeeds. One quick note about the volunteers. Who are they, you might ask? Well, they're people who have full-time jobs. They're people who are retired, and they come from all walks of life. One volunteer reader is a member of the North Carolina Highway Patrol. Now, he doesn't go in uniform. Instead, he often dresses as one of the characters that he's going to be reading about that As volunteers, the readers certainly are not paid. Well, that's not exactly true. When you see the excited faces, the smiles and the laughter, and all the excitement of those little children, that's payment enough. In a recent op-ed piece in the Fayetteville Observer, a pediatrician asserted, "If we fail to invest now in improving the school readiness of our youngest children, we cannot complain down the road when our economy continues to sputter and we slowly become a welfare state." And I'll leave you with two quotes also from the late Nelson Mandela. Whenever we, which, I think that these quotes speak directly to this concept of Read to Me. The first is this, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children." And the second quote, "Education is the most powerful weapon that can be used to bring about change in society." Pretty powerful things, the statements that he made there. I mentioned that after the, I mentioned after the volunteer reads the book to the children, it's donated to the daycare center. This Read to Me program was the brainchild of Kathy Riddle and Brenda McCray. And I asked that Kathy, I think she's here, Kathy, if you would come forward. Brenda's not able to be here tonight because she's a little under the weather. And I think that you could present some, something to our, to the Commissioners and to Mr. French and Ms. Starnes. As we, whenever we complete reading to the, to the children, we present to them a sticker that says, "I was read to today by a volunteer from the Friends of the Library." And a lot of them will tell you exactly where they want their sticker put. So you now each have a sticker that you were read to by a volunteer from the Friends of the Library. The, incidentally, anyone who, anyone who wants to volunteer in this program can do so. And I would encourage each of you to take on that little responsibility, one hour a month, or maybe even less, to read to three-year-olds. Anyone who wants to do that can contact the library, either branch, either Taylorsville or Bethlehem, or the Partnership for Children in Taylorsville. I thank you very much for the opportunity. This is a great program, and I hope that you will give it some support as far as moral support or participatory support, whatever you can do. Because as I pointed out, this is the future of the country, of the community, the young people. And over a period of years, I think we're going to see some great results as a result of this. Thank you very much.
Glenn, I'd like to offer one comment, though, and I was having a discussion with one of my former schoolmates. I can still remember all my schoolteachers from the first grade through the eighth grade, and then high school teachers, I remember some, I don't remember the others. But the two that I do remember the most that stand out in elementary school, and everybody went to school, at least in Taylorsville, at Taylorsville School that was 1 through 12, was my first and second grade teacher that read to us every day for an hour after lunch, every day. And that was Ms. Mills and Ms. Moose.
Yeah.
And they just stood out because we were enthralled by being read to and the things they read to us after the lunch period.
That's right. You just made my point again.
That's right.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Anyone else? Thank you very much. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
Next item on the agenda, and I'm going to wait for Mr. Robertson to come to the podium. Is the election of the Board Chair, who will begin serving his term or her term, the first of January. I will serve until the end of the year, but the person that's nominated and elected as Board Chair and also Board Vice Chair will begin serving January 1. And the first meeting scheduled for next year, 2014, is January 6, 2014. Now, to the point, election of Board Chair, do I hear, the floor is open for nominations for the Board Chair. Do I hear a nomination for the Chairman of the Board of the County Commissioners? I'd like to submit and nominate Larry Yoder as Chairman of the County Commission Board.
And I second that nomination.
Do I hear any other nominations?
I move to close the nomination and elect Commissioner Yoder by acclamation.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
All in favor of electing Commissioner Yoder as Chairman by acclamation, raise your right hand. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is election of Board Vice Chair, and the floor is open for nominations as Vice Chair. Do I hear a name to be nominated as Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Ryan Mayberry for the Vice Chair's position.
Do I hear a second to that?
Oh, second.
Do I hear any, the floor is still open, do I hear any other nominations?
Move to close the nomination, elect Ryan Mayberry by acclamation.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
There has been a first and second to the motion of electing Ryan Mayberry by acclamation to Vice Chair. All in favor of that, raise your right hand. Commissioner Mayberry, congratulations to be elected Vice Chair.
Thank you.
So we have a new Chairman that will take office and a new Vice Chair that will take office in January. Congratulations to both Commissioner Yoder and Commissioner Mayberry, excuse me, Commissioner The next item on the agenda is number four, which is Alexander County Audit Report for the Year, ending 6/30/13, and that's Amber McGinnis, Martin Starnes, and Associate CPA. And Jennifer, are you coming up also?
Chairman and Board, thank you for having me here tonight to present to you a summary of the June 30, 2013 fiscal year-end audit results, and we have a series of slides to go through. The first slide shows some audit results. The financial statements didn't receive an unmodified opinion, and that is a clean opinion, so that's what you're aiming for in a financial statement audit. And this whole process would not be possible without the help of Jennifer and Linda and the rest of their finance department staff. They're always a pleasure to work with, so that goes a long way. Also, as part of the financial statement audit, there were no internal control or compliance findings, so also a good point to note. And during the current fiscal year, we implemented GASB statements 63 and 65, and that's governmental accounting standards, board standards, so that's just accounting standards that changed some terminology and presentation of certain items in the financial statements, nothing too major at this point. Next slide, please. The next few slides focus on the revenues of the general fund. Your top revenue is property taxes at 50 percent. Second is local option sales taxes at 19 percent. And third is restricted intergovernmental revenues, which is federal and state grants, at 15 percent. Next. Your ad valorem taxes increased approximately $154,000, or about 1 percent, over the prior year to $15,750,000. Next. Sales tax showed a $163,000 increase to right at $6 million. The increases over the prior year were made up of, the Article 39, one cent tax was $77,000 increase, and Article 40, half-cent tax was $51,000 increase over the prior year. And that total sales tax, just to give you a little bit of a breakdown of the $6 million number, is composed of, sales tax set aside for school debt service is roughly $1.5 million; sales tax for the county was $3.6 million; and the Medicaid hold harmless for the county was $854,000. So that's the breakdown of the $6 million. Next, please. The third slot for government, excuse me, general fund revenues is restricted intergovernmental, and like I mentioned before, this is federal and state grants. This showed a approximate $149,000 decrease, or 3 percent, over the prior year, and that was federal grants decreased about $79,000, and state grants decreased approximately $52,000 over the prior year. The next slide shows the same type of information for your expenditures for your general fund. The top number-one spot is human services at 29 percent. Second is public safety at 22 percent. And third is education at 19 percent. And we have comparisons to the prior year for those three categories as well. Human services includes Health Department, DSS, and the senior center. This showed an approximate $132,000 increase, or 1.4 percent, over the prior year. Public safety includes sheriff's office, detention center, fire protection, emergency communications inspections, and emergency medical services. This showed an approximate $329,000, or 5 percent, increase over the prior year, and most of that was the increase of the detention center, excuse me, at $337,000. Next. Education expenses showed a $950,000, or 18.2 percent, increase, and this includes current expenses for the Board of Education, auditorium reimbursement, and CVCC expenses. And the increase there was from the CVCC capital outlay of $950,000 for the large Taylor Togs building. The next slide shows a breakdown of your general fund debt for the fiscal year. You had principal repayments on your debt of just over $1.6 million, and interest paid of just under $600,000. And then you can see on the slide there, it shows your notes payable balances broken down by function, general government, education, and public safety, as well as the corresponding year that each of those will be paid off. Next slide, please. The next few slides focus on fund balance of your general fund, and you can see here that your fund balance is broken down into five classifications of non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And the next few slides show you some of these calculations as of June 30. The next slide shows available fund balance as defined by the Local Government Commission. This is your total fund balance, less any non-spendable amounts, which are things not in cash form, and then what they call stabilization by state statute, and this is what is required to be restricted by state law. The next slide shows your decrease in your general fund fund balance for the year of just over $628,000. And the fund balance percentage, which is a percentage of your available fund balance as a percent of your total general fund expenditures, is just over 24 percent. And that's roughly three months' worth of expenses in your available fund balance. And then you can see that the average fund balance available for your population group, which is counties with populations of 25,000 to 50,000 people, is just over 27 percent in 2012. The 2013 information for like-sized counties is not yet available. The next slide shows your fund balance position for your general fund. Your total fund balance was $10.6 million, less your stabilization by state statute of roughly $2.6 million, leaves your available fund balance at $7.9 million. And you can see there a comparison to the 2012 numbers. The next few slides focus on your enterprise funds. First, your solid waste fund. You can see your cash from operations was a negative $71,000, and then your budgetary net loss of $67,000. Next, please. Then your net position, which is the equivalent of fund balance for enterprise funds, for your solid waste fund, total net position is $382,000, less your net position that's tied up in capital assets is $790,000. That leaves your unrestricted net position at a negative $408,000. And that means that you're neg, it's negative because most of, more than your total net position is tied up in capital assets, excuse me, so it cannot be spent. So hence the negative unrestricted amount there.
You're referring to bulldozers and that sort of?
Yes, equipment, yes. The next few slides focus on your two water funds, Bethlehem Water District and your County Water and Sewer Fund. You can see here cash from operations for both funds for the year, and then your budgetary net income for Bethlehem Water was $154,000 roughly, and County Water and Sewer was just under $38,000. And the same type information as we showed for solid waste for the water funds as for net position. Total net position for Bethlehem Water, $1.8 million, and your unrestricted portion is $954,000. Then County Water and Sewer at $9.5 million total net position, and your unrestricted portion is $850,000 of that number. The last slide here focuses on your water fund debt. Your outstanding debt for Bethlehem Water is $863,000 at June 30, and County Water and Sewer is just over $3 million. And there you can also see the principal and interest paid in each of those funds for the year, and the year that the debt will be paid off, Bethlehem Water 2018 and County Water and Sewer 2028. And just as a side note, the, as you know, the bonds in the Bethlehem Water Fund were refunded during the current fiscal year, or 2013 fiscal year, and to lower the interest rate, but the debt payoff remains the same in 2018. That completes the summary. Are there any questions that I can answer for you? That's a lot of information at once.
Not a question, but, and we all know the answer to this, but would you just give a brief explanation about why we conduct an audit? Who does the audit?
Yes.
You know, kind of the, just so the people in the audience and the people listening know why this is done.
Right. The Local Government Commission is a third party to our audit contract. State law requires you to be audited every year by an independent accounting firm, so we come in and conduct the audit and submit your financial statements to the Local Government Commission by October 31, typically around that time. And then they have to approve, review, and approve the financial statements and give us any feedback as necessary. And by this time, they have approved those financial statements for the June 30, 2013 fiscal year.
And it's also to ensure that the Financial Department of Alexander County is being run
Correct.
according to state statutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
One comment. You said it when you started, I'd like, on behalf of the Commissioners, Martin Starnes does an outstanding job as far as the audit, but I'd also like to thank and appreciate Jennifer and her staff for the very fine job they do in accounting, making people sign, making people get their stuff in, keeping it up to date. Jennifer, we appreciate what y'all do.
I'd like to kind of dovetail off of what Commissioner Robertson has to say. If I called the office for Rick, the telephone attendant will say he's down in finance talking to Jennifer. So, Rick, I don't know, maybe you want to move your desk down there because he spends a whole lot of time down there. But Jennifer, we all so appreciate the job that you do. I know you work long and hard to do what you do, and it shows in the audit, too. So we appreciate it.
It's taken a while to get to the point where we get invoices and everything turned in in the format they should, but I think in addition to the financial staff, the county staff deserves a little bit of a thank you, too, because I think across the board, we're doing better as far as getting stuff in to the Financial Department in the format it should be. So thank county employees for paying attention to what Jennifer's asked for.
I'm going to ask one question, because I think it goes back to 2008. And if you're not able to answer the question, I understand. But if I'm not mistaken, in 2008, our fund balance was 2 percent, or?
It was actually in 2002.
2002, our fund balance was 2 percent, and we were receiving letters from the LGC telling us that we were not able to do anything like build a new Sheriff's Department because we weren't able to borrow that money. department, because we weren't able to borrow that money. And we weren't able to do anything in this county as far as financing at that time. And I think you got those letters every month.
We had to send reports back to them on a monthly basis.
Right. We were under very strict supervision. And since that time, this county has bitten the bullet, and we've gotten our fund balance to twenty-four percent. I would like to say one thing. I'd like to commend the commissioners for being very conservative with the money of Alexander County, and also for the departments for not spending money and asking for things that were unreasonable. The other thing is, I'd like to commend Rick on being very strict county manager. And I know that you get a lot of flack from a lot of department heads sometimes because you don't always say yes. But until we built this fund balance up to twenty-four percent, Alexander County was not able to do the things. We had to wait five years in order to build our Alexander County Sheriff's Department. Five years we waited. We saved our money, and we had to bet our time. And I'd like to commend the employees of Alexander County, and especially Rick and the Finance Department and the department heads for being able to maintain and make sure that this happened. We've come a long way from two percent. And when you get those letters from the LGC telling you that you can't do anything, and you get those letters, you have to send those reports to Raleigh, it's extremely tough, and it's hard on our citizens and our county, especially in our social services and our law enforcement and other people, because we're not able to have those funds available. And I just want to tell you that I'm glad to see that twenty-four percent. I'd prefer it be twenty-seven percent, but that's because it makes it greater and gives us more flexibility in the things that we can do in this county. But you guys have done a tremendous job, and I just want to say thank you very much. And you represented Alexander County well, and you've done a good job of making sure everybody stays straight. And for that, I thank y'all. Good job.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Amen to what Larry just said. One note, he mentioned our fund balance currently is twenty-four percent. Counties of our population are averaged around twenty-seven percent. Statutorily, we're, it's mandated that we have one month's revenue in general fund. That's about eight percent. But things cost just as much in Alexander County as they do in Charlotte Mecklenburg, for instance, fire trucks and ambulances and things like that. And because of that, we have a lower tax base, so the LGC requires our percentages to be higher than for a larger county. And folks deserve a little bit of explanation on that. That's why we need to be in this twenty-four percent range, just so we can finance projects.
Well, I would like to commend the taxpayer for having the twenty-four percent. After all, we didn't pay it all. They did. Very important part of this.
Any other comments from me and the commissioner?
No, you guys have done a great job. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. McGinnis, do you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Chairman, we need to approve this thing.
I would like to put on the floor a motion to approve the audit report for the year ending six-thirty thirteen. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bradley Erp, if you would come to the podium, please, sir. And Bradley is going to give us a proposal for a new ambulance for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I come back to you tonight bringing some figures for our new ambulance purchase. We, a few meetings ago, we received permission to go ahead and do a piggyback process to purchase an ambulance. And I gave you a revised quote from Northwestern Emergency Vehicles. I should have it there in front of you. We broke out individual pricing for like lettering and stuff like that, and we went to some local vendors. And I got you three prices for lettering our ambulance here locally. I went to three vendors that I knew had our decal kits and stuff like that in their systems, and they could print out the vinyl letters and the decals and stuff like that. It goes on the side of the ambulance and the front of the ambulance. It's reflective-type striping. And I'm here tonight to ask you to approve a purchase amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, one oh six, for the ambulance purchase, and then permission to spend the six hundred dollars to a local vendor, which is Bradley Benfield of Benfield's Body Shop, to do the lettering and decal work on our ambulance, when it comes back down here to the county. Mr. Benfield actually combined with Custom Frame Crafters to come up with his quote. Custom Frame Crafters is actually cutting the vinyl letters, and he's going to do the install on the lettering.
So again, your proposal is a total price of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty-one dollars and thirty-five cents?
Actually, it'll be three hundred and seventy-five dollars less than that, because if we get a local vendor to do the decal work, it'll come up to a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and six dollars.
Okay, that's great.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just want to point out to the board that this was budgeted in our budget, our current budget, so.
So it's not addition to?
Correct.
It's not additional amount, but it's?
Mr. Chairman, there's been a lot of numbers quoted. Let me clarify if I may, sir. The ambulance is a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Correct.
The child safety seat is eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Right.
And the lettering that we're talking about is six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Correct.
And whatever those three total is, the, it's less than a hundred and twenty-one, but we want to make sure we got the right amounts in, so Jennifer doesn't have to come back and get on us.
Right, it'd be a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, I think it was.
Well, Bradley, can you assure me that this one will ride better than the other one?
Not to get Ford and Chevrolet and so these other companies get online with the good riding truck. But the last one actually does ride a whole lot better. They've lengthened out the boxes and gave it a smoother ride, because you've got a longer chassis underneath it, and that did help some with our ride.
Why are you needing this new ambulance, if you don't mind refreshing our memory on the people listening?
Okay, we've got several, several of our ambulances got four or five years on them, and they've got well over a hundred thousand miles on the majority of our ambulances right now. The last ambulance that we put on the road in April ninth of this year has already got forty-six thousand miles on it.
Is that the one we went to West Jefferson to bring down there?
Mm-hmm. It's already got forty-six thousand miles on it. We're on a Towesville truck, we're putting about five to six thousand miles per month on each of those two trucks down there, because roughly we don't have a hospital, so we're running fifty miles on an average trip. From the time we leave the station, go to the residence, go to the house, and go in, get the patient, take them to the local hospital, whether it be Wilkes, Caldwell, wherever, and get back, it's roughly fifty miles on a trip.
I will make a comment, Bradley, and I think you would agree with this. I hope you will anyhow. The last ambulance we purchased, I went with Bradley to West Jefferson to pick it up, to Northwestern Emergency Vehicles, and I was really impressed with the assembly of the ambulances they were assembling. So I think the quality is there, and, which means we're getting good value for our money. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I would. As North Carolina folks up there building those ambulances, they take pride in what they do.
And that's important, that we're buying something within the state, too. Anybody else have any questions?
And this is Wilkes County?
It's West Jefferson.
West Jefferson?
Yeah.
Okay, but that's almost local.
Ask.
Almost, yeah.
It's almost local.
About an hour and ten-minute drive up there, yeah, to the place.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I might, I think we're at a point with our ambulances that this is going to be something we're going to have to address every year. In the past, we had not purchased an ambulance every year, but we're now at a point with the number of calls we have, that you're going to see this in our budget. We're going to ask you for a new ambulance every, in every fiscal year. It's just where we are in reality of things. So again, this proposal that Bradley's discussing tonight is in the current two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen budget. I just wanted to point that out. I think it's, this is here to stay.
How much money, on average, do you get for a used ambulance when we put those out?
Most of the time, when we get rid of ours, they've been used up. They've got so many miles on them, they're not worth much. I think we got five thousand dollars out of a couple that we sold several years ago, but they, they wasn't much.
Anybody else, have you got other questions?
I just got a question for Rick. Do we need to revise the amount since it's?
No, sir.
All right.
And that, that child safety seat, just a little explanation about why it's eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. It's actually built on a pedestal. It's got like a cabinet underneath it. It's bound down to the ambulance, and the child seat is actually made into the back of that seat. It folds down, so it's rear-facing, which you have to have for either forward or rear-facing to be able to properly secure a child in there. And it's designed primarily for non-injured children. We use other devices on, like on our stretcher, if we're taking an injured or sick kid to the hospital.
But this would be a child that was with a parent, was in an accident, had to be transported?
Right. You have to have some form of being able to secure them down. And there's really not no room anywhere else to keep like a child seat in the side compartment of the ambulance or anything like that, because all the cabinets are pretty full.
Okay. Any other questions?
You can't just go and pick one up at Babies R Us and?
No.
Yes, I understand that, but just?
Based on what Bradley just said, they frown on you putting kids in cabinets, too, to hold.
Yeah, we, yeah, we tried to go in the side compartment, but that didn't work.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved.
Thank you, sir.
Bradley, thanks a lot.
Y'all have a good night.
Thanks for what you and your crews do, too. The next item on the agenda is the update of county travel policy to comply with IRS rules. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have an updated county travel policy to comply with the IRS rules, as you just stated. I'd like to point out that this is revised, again, to comply with IRS, and now allows, one, I say highlight, one, it now allows meal reimbursements only for trips with overnight travel. Other changes to the county travel policy include higher meal reimbursement limits for lunch and dinner to reflect price increases, since the policy was la, last updated in two thousand and five. Also, meal reimbursement will be on a per-meal basis rather than an amount to be reimbursed per day. Itemized receipts are required instead of receipts with a single amount. If you'll flip over to page one in the policy in your packets, under number three C, it says, "The reimbursement for the cost of meals in connection with county business shall be the following rates: breakfast, eight dollars; lunch, twelve dollars; and dinner, twenty-five dollars." Reimbursement is on a per-meal basis rather than an amount to be reimbursed per day. Itemized receipts must be turned in for reimbursements. Meal reimbursements will only be made for trips with overnight travel. Now, if you'll turn over to page three, just to highlight a couple other items with the change in policy. Number F, under, at the bottom of the page, when it talks about a credit card. Employees and officials authorized to use a county credit card may elect to use them instead of reimbursement. However, meals are still subject to the meal rates listed in Section three C, and are only reimbursable for trips with overnight travel. Itemized receipts for expenditures must be submitted with the credit card bill to the Finance Office in order to, for the expenditures to be approved. And again, this follows the new IRS guidelines. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. French, I do have one. This is very similar to the travel policy when I worked for Southern Bell and Bell South as far as reimbursement and the, some of you, obviously can't see it at home, but in this package is a Excel spreadsheet that shows where you went, what meals you?
Right.
When are the individuals that fill out these sheets required to submit these sheets?
As soon as they return from their trip.
So it would be on whatever, on a trip basis or a monthly basis?
On a, on a trip basis. The trip also has to be pre-approved by the department head, and then the department head signs off when they return.
Okay.
And those meal reimbursement rates, those, that includes tips as well?
It does, yes, sir.
Any other questions of Mr. French? Thank you, Mr. French.
Move to approve the changes as presented.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved. Next item on the agenda is sales tax report. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the sales tax report for the first three months of the fiscal year. Through three months, we've collected eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars in sales tax. This is just about in line with what our budget is. Last year, we collected, for the first three months of the fiscal year, nine hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. So it's about fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars less than last year, or one point seven percent. And fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars is our hold harmless amount. It's running a little better than it was during the first couple of months. It's picked up, picked up some, but it's, we're still running behind. I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Heating no questions, do I hear a motion to approve the sales tax report? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Sales tax report is approved. Number eight is Budget Ordinance Amendment, number eighteen, County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment number eighteen is to budget for warranty extension for the detention center, integrated security systems, labor, and software support only, to increase fire emergency services budget for purchase of a truck to pull mass casualty incident, MCI trailer, and the companion animal mobile equipment trailer, the CAM ET in emergency locations. The purchase is being funded by a hundred percent Homeland Security Grant, and to increase DSS budget for award of FEMA Phase Thirty-One grant funds for emergency assistance payments for food. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions about the Budget Ordinance Amendment number eighteen? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Budget Ordinance Amendment number eighteen has been approved. Number nine, Other Business, County Manager Report. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things to point out in the County Manager's Report. First, we received three bids for the Bethlehem Ellendale Water System Improvement Project. We, the bids were open. The bidders were Buckeye Construction, Neil Grading, and Hickory Sand. We're not recommending those bids at this time. They're being reviewed by the state, and will be on the January sixth agenda. But the base bids are within our budgeted numbers. And we'll, again, we'll consider those at our January sixth meeting. I'd also like to suggest that we move ahead with projects that, there's three projects that we currently have either grant funds for or loan funds for that are outstanding. First, the courthouse project. We want to start the process of getting the courthouse project ready to bid. We still have about one point five million of the ten million we borrowed to do the courthouse, I mean, to do the law enforcement detention center. So we still have about one point five left to address the courthouse. We like to address that, start that next year, two thousand and fourteen. Also, we received a grant, a part-of-grant to do Rocky Face, and we've had that on hold. We'd like to move ahead and start getting that ready to go to bid. We have a timeline to address that. We have grant funds, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is half, half of what we need. It'll probably take over a year to complete that project. Again, we're not talking about starting tomorrow. We'd like to just to move ahead and start moving on it. And then the other would be the water project, which I just mentioned to you. And then the other would be the water project, which I just mentioned to you. There's, we have about $3.2 million in state revolving no interest loan funds and that's all been, that's all will be paid back with water funds. So, I'd like for us to move ahead with those three projects. Again, I won't be coming back to you in January with specific motions. We just want to start the process of getting those ready to go, go move forward. So, speaking of the budget process, the 2014-2015 budget process, we'll meet with our department heads earlier this year. As we've discussed, we'll meet on January the 9th and start that process. So, it'll be here before we know it. Also point out that the Alexander County offices will be closed December 24th and 25th for the Christmas holidays. We will also be closed January 1st for the New Year's holiday. Also want to point out that the 2014 NACO conference is scheduled for March 1st through the 5th in Washington and registration opens this month. Also have something that we're all pretty excited about. Rocky Face Park will be featured on UNC TV's North Carolina Weekend on Thursday, December 19th at 9, 9 o'clock PM and Friday, December 20th at 8:30 PM. It'll be on Charter Channels 12 and 7/12. The show will also air on UNCMX and UNCEX that weekend where available. And you have that information here. The program will be repeated throughout the weekend and will be online the following week at the site, so noted on your screen. We're pretty excited about that. I think you'll be real excited to see us mention. There's a few pictures from Rocky Face Park, which we're very excited about.
Mr. French, when was this filmed?
Early fall, I believe, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Couple of questions about Rocky Face Park that I've heard comments out in the county. And it's, and this is great. I mean, I watch North Carolina Weekend just about every weekend or on Thursday nights just to see, you know, what is available to do in the state. And they try to take different parts of the state and show restaurants and activities and so forth. But the question I have is, talk for a minute about the history of Rocky Face Park, how it came to be, the financial aspects of it, because I've heard it said that the county spent $700,000 to acquire the land for Rocky Face Park. Can you kind of talk about that for a minute?
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to. The county did not spend any money to purchase the property. The property was donated by the Felburn Foundation. We wisely used the property value as the match for the part of grant, which was, which was around $500,000. That's not the exact number. It was actually less than that, but the property was used as the match. So, there was not, there were no funds initially in that phase of it spent on the park. It was all grant funds and the match from the value of that property, but the county didn't buy that property, didn't pay any money at all for that property.
So, if anyone hears anybody saying that the county paid $700,000 for that property, that's totally untrue.
Yeah, that's correct. There's a small, there's a few acres there. There was a piece of property that sort of was there on the, on the front, on the road that we purchased and we did get some loan, I mean, some grant funds to help purchase those, but that was like 30 some thousand dollars. A part of that was grant funds also. But we didn't buy any 700, we didn't pay any $700,000 for property, so just want to make that clear.
Okay. Any other comments about North Carolina Weekend? I personally like to watch the program and just think it's great. Anybody, any other commissioners have any comments?
Not about the North Carolina Weekend, but basically, so we have about 30 some odd thousand dollars in property out there. That's, that's all the money that this county has spent on property at Rocky Face Park. Going back to item two, you did say that was a zero interest loan for the water projects.
That's right.
That's a state loan for zero interest. And then the, the original loan for the law enforcement and detention center was $10 million.
That's correct.
And we had always had in mind to, for that 1.5 million dollars to go towards the courthouse because of some renovations needed there as far as the HVAC system and some other things.
That's correct.
And Rick said it, but we'll go back and emphasize it. What he said was to begin preliminary work, which would be putting together some plans and so on to get some pricing, because right now, the only thing that's been done on that project, it really has been just preliminary pricing or preliminary budgets for the architect. There's nothing firm done.
That's correct. So, nothing's going to happen. You won't see anything happen anytime soon. We'll be back talking some more with you about it, but we want to start moving in that, move forward with the projects.
And Mr. French, I think I heard you say this, just so I'll be clear, as far as whether I need to do a motion. You're going to come back later on to request specific approval for these different actions so we don't need to approve them tonight?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions on items one through 10 on the County Manager's report? No further questions? Go to the consent agenda. A motion to, is, I'd like to put forth a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. The consent agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is adjournment and I'd like to move, a motion to adjourn into closed session citing North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11, parentheses A, parentheses 1, comma 2, comma 4, comma 5, and 6, to prevent disclosure of confidential information, degrees, prizes, or awards, economic development, contractual, and personnel. Do I hear a motion to adjourn into closed session?
So moved.
I second it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We are moving into closed session.